Good afternoon. Welcome to the Monday, May 5th, 2025, regular meeting for Villas Council, for the Council, for the Village of Yellow Springs. Judy, if we could call the row?
Yes, Stokes.
I am here.
Devoe Leonard?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Gustafson?
Here.
Also present is Village Manager Johnny Burns, Village Solicitor Amy Blankenship, Project Lead Elise Giardulo, and Finance Director Michelle Robinson.
Alrighty. Well, thank you, everyone.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I forgot to say that Brian House is out of town, and we do need a motion to excuse.
Yep. Why don't we do that right now? The Chair will entertain a motion to excuse Brian House's absence.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Alright, moving on. Brian is excused. Alright, we will not have an executive session. And so in the form of announcements, we do have Mayor Pam here that has a special announcement. So we're gonna call on her at this point. And then, Council colleagues, if you have other things, I'll open up the D S T U. Ooh, handouts. For the record, for the record, we love handouts.
For the record.
For the record, we love when they come ahead.
Call her, handouts.
Two sides to it, too.
Did you get one? You sure? Okay.
Y'all want me to guess this is a...
So we have the one side here, one side there, and we'll flip them. Well, I guess the film's on, Pam starts. Alright, hi.
Ready?
Yes.
I'm here to do a special announcement of an activity that's coming up throughout the month of May, and I wanted to make sure the Council people knew about it. Johnny knew about it, and perhaps some of you have heard about it. But for your information, May is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And this event was brought to my attention a couple of months ago. So I agreed to start attending some of the events that Master Sen Gao has brought to the Village of Yellow Springs. He is a renowned, world-class, world-famous martial arts champion sixteen times. Kevin, he could even probably be, take you on and, you know, put you down.
Give him a round for his money.
Kung Fu, Tai Chi, world-class. And he has been doing lessons at the Senior Center now for probably a month. And he's also connected with Sam downstairs as far as our recreation area is concerned. Because he wants to do, host the first Yellow Springs Asian Festival for our village. You'll look, if you look at the proclamation, I included the draft of that. Because Master Gao, every Sunday morning at the Senior Center, he's teaching Kung Fu and Tai Chi. On May 20th, he's going to do a presentation at the Yellow Springs Public Library in a class for youth in Kung Fu. On May 28th, he's participating in the Senior Center Flash Mob. He's bringing Chinese, one of those Chinese dragons, and will participate in the dragon.
Lion, it's lion dance.
Do the, as he called it, the dragon dance, but I believe it involves a lion. And then, on May 31st, from 1 to 3, he has reserved with, through Sam, the Brian Center Gym, where he will come in at noon with his entourage and set up. For two hours, they will be hosting and performing in the first Yellow Springs Asian Festival from 1 to 3. The pictures on the other side were created and sent to me as far as advanced publicity for the culture festival. Gives you a little idea of the flash and so forth, some of the things that are gonna be going on on that day. It's, he brings with him students and their parents from Columbus, where he teaches, from Dayton, where he teaches, Cincinnati, where he teaches. So this, this gentleman is very well-known. He is a master at his craft. Hopefully, you'll be hearing something about it in the newspaper. He's got quite a publicity group behind him and so forth. So I wanted you to know what'll be happening on the 31st. And I certainly want you to know about some of the activities leading up to this event. So that is the extent of the announcement. And thank you. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Pam. It does, this does sound like it's a chock full of excitement and activity. It sounds like most of it, if not some of it, has already been arranged.
Yes, that's correct.
Do you need anything else from us?
He's been working on this behind the scene. Everything is free and for our community to enjoy. So I knew there were a lot of moving parts to this, Kevin, so I wanted to take the burden from you and announce it myself.
Well, we appreciate you. Thank you. You're so kind.
I wanna ask a question. Is there anything that the Public Arts and Culture Commission can do?
There may be, as far as publicity, helping with publicity and spreading the word and so forth. So I'll put that out there to him.
Alright.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, great. Thanks, Pam. So anyone else have announcements with handouts? Without?
I don't have them with handouts, but I got two announcements. The utility office will be closed on May 8th, so staff can do an all-day training session. And then, spring cleanup is ongoing right now from May 5th to the 9th, so just... You'll have to work later.
These are the week.
And then, the shredded event has been pushed to September. More dates to come. That's the first we can get in, so.
Good.
Those are the announcements that we have.
Great. Appreciate you.
Can I just ask you a quick question? I had a neighbor ask, is yard waste something that can be put out as part of spring cleanup?
No.
Okay, thank you.
But yard waste is picked up every Friday, from, every last Friday of the month, from now until...
Now, you gotta have yard bags.
Yeah, you gotta have the bags from downstairs or rumpie bags. Can't have the ones I have from Lowe's and write rumpie on them?
Don't work that way.
Okay, alright. Alright, great, great. Any other announcements? Hi. Good see. Alright, alright. So thank you, everyone, for all of that. We're now at Consent Agenda, and what we have in the Consent Agenda is the minutes from our last regular meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion and second to approve the minutes of the April 21st, 2025 regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side? Alright, hearing none, that motion has passed. Now, we are at the review of the agenda. This is the part of the agenda where we take the opportunity to look at the published agenda, proposed changes, that is adding to the agenda, things for consideration, and/or removing things that should not be considered. Do we have any comments regarding the review of the agenda? Alright, hearing none. We will follow the agenda as published. Gavin, if you would, please read the petitions and communications.
Yep. The Clerk will receive and file Jamie Sharp from Y S Toy Company regarding a letter of support asked of Council, and then the Mayor's Clerk with the Mayor's Monthly Report. That's it.
We also had, and I did not get it to you on time, and it's sitting at your desk. I'd send it out to folks a little earlier. Emily Seb will send a request that Council consider hearing a resolution in support of the Ohio Housing Trust Fund, which is being defunded. So you have that information via email. It's repeated in the thing that's before you at your, at your table. I will, if no one's got objections, I will add that to future agenda items. So this is something you just generally want to do.
Yep.
But we can address that at a future agenda.
Yep, yep. Any other concerns about that? We're just adding, probably for the next meeting perhaps? Okay, sounds good. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all of that. We're now to public hearings and legislation. We begin with, I just wanted to check real quick and say, do I get to stay up here for this one? But yeah, I do. So second reading and, and public hearing of ordinance 2025-06. Before we move on, Chair will entertain a motion and second so that this second reading and any other ordinances are read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, thank you much. So Judy, if you could, by title only, read ordinance 2025-06. Thank you.
Yep, this is repealing Section 242.01, Composition Classification of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting new Section 242.01, Composition Classification, to add a second Community Outreach Specialist position.
Alright, may I get a Chair and second to discuss, a Chair and a, a motion and a second to discuss this item?
So moved.
So actually, it's a motion to approve. Take a vote on the motion to approve later, so.
Yes, we're not just discussing. We're approving.
And I know you know that. I think we just...
I, I, I'm...
Words got in there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Indeed. Thank you, thank you, Judy, to keep me honest. I did hear what I believe is a legitimate motion.
To approve.
Yes, a motion to approve. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Alright, thank you. Now, we will discuss, and who is leading this discussion?
It is me. It is me. So this is the position that Paige has been asking for, for the second position for the COS, due to the workload that they are experiencing down there that is not slowing down. It's only getting larger. There, she has given two reports, and she's asked for questions. The only thing that was not in there was the salary range or a compensation range. And Michelle and I was thinking it's between hourly and compensation. It's somewhere between 50 and 75,000. This would need to come back for a supplemental a little bit later, probably the next supplemental to be able to do it. We will not have enough cost savings in the budget to be able to afford this second position.
Okay, I thought we would have, due to not being from staff?
We, that is the way that Paige presented it. But I don't feel comfortable with taking a gamble. If we're going to go for the position, we need to make sure that it's in the budget to be able to do it.
Because those other positions are still budgeted and potentially filled. Okay, got you, got you. Anything else?
That's it.
Council, any comments, questions, concerns regarding this, this ordinance and the legislation involved? Anything from staff? Alright, since this is the second reading, I'm gonna open the public meeting. So the public meeting, public hearing is now open. This is where members of the community, any and everyone affiliated with the village, would like to say something with regard to this piece of legislation. Yep. So, oh, we have one? Go ahead, Ryan.
Riley Dixon, Yellow Springs News, if you're in town. I guess I'm just interested to learn about the kind of credentials this person would have to bring to the table, if they would need police training explicitly, or if a social worker, you know, without any kind of prior PD experience would be sufficient for this position. I, I'm, you know, I'm married to a therapist who comes from a social work background. And so I understand the various ways that, or I have, I think I understand the various avenues people can come into these kinds of positions. So I'd be curious to learn more about what Council and what the village would prioritize, whether it's someone with explicit PD background, or if it's somebody with a stronger social work or community, more of like a community kind of oriented person, unaffiliated with PD. Which qualifications would be more prioritized, I guess? I, I would be interested to learn what the village would be interested in hiring. Thank you.
Can you speak to that, Jen?
I don't know if I can or if Amy Blankenship can. We've spoke about it, but we have not posted anything, so. There is gonna be some qualifications.
I mean, I could guess, but I don't wanna say.
Yeah, I could guess, too.
I think our guesses, which don't matter.
Do we not have a job description for the current position?
We do.
So Riley, you might wanna request that job description from Paige, 'cause she's got the current job description.
Thanks.
And we'll just put it, put it to bed with that. Thanks. Bring that up. Any other commentary? Oh, yes, you were...
Yeah, so I guess you might not know the answer to this. I was expecting to ask Paige about it, but, so that, it says like, over 600 individuals. So is that 600 different people, or is that 600 different engagements? Like with, so could, is it like 300 people who've been contacted to? I'm just trying to have a sense of the...
It's 600 different people.
600 different people, okay. And so, right now, as I understand it, a lot of the role is helping to move resources from other entities. Like people come needing help with something or other, and then because of our relationships with multiple of the other social service organizations, we help distribute them. Have you, do you have a sense of like, are there, are there enough resources to, like, so we had double as much work happening? And I'm assuming it's not double as much, meaning we're assuming that Florence is doing more than one FTE worth of work now.
Correct.
So then, a new person starts, and hopefully, we have no more than two FTEs worth of work happening. But does it, is it our sense that there are the resources to distribute essentially by another person?
I, I think the second person would be able to tap into some more resources and be able to look at some different avenues to be able to give more people more help. Where Florence does not have the time to do that, because she's completely overwhelmed and tapping into the resources that she has right now. So the second person would be able to go in a different direction to be able to find more resources.
Okay. And then, I know that Paige was very explicit that this was not trying to address the, the Victims Service, Victims Advocacy stuff. But is this going to address the Victims Advocacy stuff?
They will be handling it. We are to revisit that in six months, is that correct? So then, we will, if we continue down this, this would be part of their process.
Alright, anyone else in Council? Anyone else in the public?
So if nobody else says anything, I'll just, my only just two cents, Johnny and I talked about this earlier, is that we'd definitely appreciate seeing as many of these things as possible in the budget process, just so we can be able to have a full sense of what our resources are that we have to allocate and can think about, you know, we talked about this especially a lot as there were concerns in the past about staff ideas not being sort of able to be heard by Council. And so, yeah, just noting that, I understand, we talked about it earlier, that this is, it sort of came up just after the budget process. So just noting for the record that hopefully, in the future, as many things can come through the budget as possible.
I wanna maybe, I'm gonna ask a clarifying question, kind of for myself, of you. We're not, we're not allocating resources. We are not. The, we do to a certain extent, but for the most part, this is one person being a social worker for 600 people. So they are contacting ODJFS or assisting people to call, to contact ODJFS or DODD or hospitals, doctor's appointments. So a social worker basically helps someone with activities of daily living that other people usually don't necessarily need help with. And finding housing, Section 8, Green Metropolitan Housing. And so it's one person doing all of that. And I understand that, I understand that it would be great to have had that, that information, but you, sometimes you don't know that you need help until you need help. And I think that we have to consider that, too. It's not, you know, usually, it's not just a, it's a, it's a lot, it's a lot. So it's one person doing that for 600 people.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that. I mean, it's just, yeah, it's... There are points during the budget process where we're sort of told, hey, we have X amount of money. And if we spend any more money, then we have a problem.
Totally.
And then there are other points where things come up, and it's as though there is not a financial constraint. So I'm just saying, that's the one time a year that we talk about it and say, hey, here's how much we get in, here much, here's how much we're gonna go out.
Yeah, that's not, that's not lost on me.
Right.
Yeah, that's...
Okay. Anything else?
And it's not lost on me, that there's a lot of good work happening. There's clearly a need for more social services in our system.
Anything else from the public before we close the public meeting? Public hearing? Alright, seeing no activity, the public hearing is now closed. Council, any other comments, questions, concerns, et cetera, before we vote? Alright, Judy, let's do a roll call vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Devoe Leonard?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, everyone, for your participation. We also have emergency reading of ordinance 2025-07. Judy, if you could do that by title only?
This is a 2025 second quarter supplemental appropriation and declaring an emergency, Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio.
Alright, can I get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Michelle, you're up. Hi. Welcome, welcome back. I know you've done some vacation or something since the last...
Yep. Alright, so the supplemental for second quarter, a lot of it was donations that Sam received in, and she'd like to use those for the lifeguard certifications. So as you see, the $1,400, that's what that one is for. Just above that one is a grant reimbursement that Paige received for last year's expenses for body-worn cameras, and she'd like to have that put back into the capital equipment fund. Then there was also another donation that was received, actually two, for special events for the youth program that they designated. They wanted it for the youth program. And then, the rest of them, I'll just put them all together. They're added to the budget lines for utility roundup and for refunds and overpayments.
Okay. That looks good, sounds good. Council, do we have any questions of, Michelle?
I don't.
Nope.
Straightforward.
I was thinking about a question I had, but it was, it was, it's probably for another part of the report, so I'll, I'll hold off on that. Alright, thank you very much. Michelle, appreciate you. Alright, this seems pretty straightforward. Judy, do we need, with this being an emergency?
It is an emergency. You normally open a public hearing even on emergencies. Requires, but yes.
Well, we'll do it, 'cause we're here. Alright, we just opened a public hearing for this legislation. That public hearing is open. Anybody in the public want to comment, question, concerned about this supplement to our budget? I was trying to play the Jeopardy tune on my head. Alright, seeing no activity, the public hearing is now closed. And I'll ask Council once again, any other questions concerned before we vote? Alright, hearing none, Judy, if we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Gustafson?
Yes.
Devoe Leonard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you. We're now down to the reading of Resolution 2025-26. Judy, if you could do that by title only?
This is adopting Village of Yellow Springs annual goals for 2025-26.
Alright, can you get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, thank you. I am looking at our staff table, waiting for someone back there to stand up. So y'all, y'all know the border.
They got that mic.
Yeah, you got the mics. But that's okay.
That's true, that's fair. Good evening. Elise Giardulo, project lead. So before you, you have the finalized set of goals that came together. I think they, they ended up looking a bit wonky in the packet with the way that the bullet points came out. So if anything's unclear in any of that, let me know. But yes, that's what we came to together. Any questions on any of that?
I think we're good. I think we're good. I've got stuff floating around in my head, but I won't trouble you with that. But I did like the way it was, the presentation, and there, yeah, there might have been one formatting bullet or another, but other than that, you know, everything that we talked about in our special meeting, what we talked about reviewing this in our previous public meeting, yeah, everything looked good to me. Council colleagues, comments?
Looks good.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, everybody's happy? Alright. Thank you, Elise. I should, I should stop thinking, because I keep having lots of stuff floating in my head. So I'm just gonna, it would just complicate things, so I'm not. Alright, so, so we all have done this. We've all been involved with, with the goals. So it's just formalizing those. So all those in favor of accepting Resolution 2025-26, thereby affecting, accepting village council or village goals as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side? Alright, hearing none, that motion has passed. Thank you very much. Judy, if you could, read by title only, Resolution 2025-27.
This is authorizing the village manager to execute, execute a development agreement with Matthew and Julie Jones.
Can I get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, hi, Amy.
Good evening.
Hi.
I think Johnny and I are gonna tag-team this one. So this is the, it's captioned a development agreement. It's also a pre-annexation agreement with Matt and Julie Jones. This document was contemplated in the donation agreement between the Jones and the school board. In that agreement, there was a list of contingencies attached, and one of them was that Jones and Village would pursue a pre-annexation agreement. That's what this document is. So we've talked about this, you know, we've talked around this for quite some time as we went through the process of having the donation finalized between Jones and schools. And now, this is the culmination of, of our commitment to enter into this agreement with her related to the possible annexation of 84 acres of land into the village, as well as some, what you see in the agreement. There's some discussion about the possibility of a PUD on the property. The agreement reserves all discretion of Council. It's called out in there several times that, you know, this is the terms, that staff will support a lot of the details that are in here, but that it is within Council's discretion to make these determinations regarding annexation and ultimately zoning. But this agreement sets forth the intentions of the parties.
Okay, and to be clear, this, there's light tech, then there's soccer, and there's replacement soccer, and the consideration of... And the consideration of that 3.6 acres of land being donated by the Joneses, this, after we pass this, will we have done everything that, that might be a hindrance to that other agreement moving forward?
Yes, I shy away a little bit from saying that this is the consideration for that agreement because we, Village, are not a party to that agreement. That agreement was between the Joneses and the schools. Of course, as the parties were all navigating that process to get down the path of being able to file the Lytec application, the village was very involved in those conversations. And so, yes, the domino effect that you're describing is absolutely true, but certainly the village is not contractually bound to this. It's just been part of the discussion and the plans up until this point.
Okay. All right. Counsel colleagues, any questions for our solicitor? Any other comments about the resolution? Bonnie, can you add any, thank you, Amy, appreciate you. Is there any site, any insight you can provide?
Um, no, this has just been a long process and we're, and we've been back and forth with the Joneses lawyer, and Amy's had a hand in it as well in trying to come up with the finalized agreements. So this is the first of some more to come.
Okay.
As far as coming to council to get approval.
Okay. Well, as you rightly, it is pretty straightforward on our end, and there's a lot of stuff packed in there, so we'll let all that happen.
And I will say, it, it's not like they're breaking ground tomorrow. They're just getting this in there to where if they do want to break ground in the future, it can be, it can be developed.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm good with it. And like I said, it's not, we'll, we'll, we'll see, see some variation of this again as, as we move forward. All righty, that being the case, all those in favor of passing this resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Hearing none, that motion is passed. Thank you very much, everyone, for your consideration, for your participation with the public hearings and legislation. Now we're to the part of the meeting where we open the meeting up to the public for citizen concerns. We would ask that you come up, identify yourself, your relationship to the Village of Yellow Springs. You will be on a three-minute timer. That is the way we roll. We would ask if multiple folks come up, that you do make unique comments and not repeat what's already been said. We, as council, are not obligated to, so please don't anticipate a response to any comments or questions presented during citizen concerns. Are there any citizen concerns? Yep, come up.
Hi, Rick Sanders, live just outside of the village on Easteneen. I'm actually not expressing a concern, I'm just trying to understand what, what just transpired. Eighty milli, eighty acres were, or maybe donated, maybe acquired by the village. And there was, I heard a reference to not breaking ground yet, but are there plans for that land? That's all I'm asking. Are there plans for the land? And I, I bet you, there aren't any hard and fast, official, public plans for the land, but there was mention of breaking ground. So, and there, and I, a quick glance through the, through the motion that was passed, seems to say that all sorts of things could be done with the land, allowing for that, but also saying that none of those are, are certain. But I wondered if, is there a general idea of what, what the village is going to do with 80 acres?
Thank you. I, I can answer that. The village is not acquiring 84 acres, this is just an annexation of 84 acres. It is still privately owned. What was talked about a donation is the 3.6 acres to replace the soccer fields if the Lytec property or the Lytec project would go forward at the corner of Easteneen and Dayton.
Yep.
Okay. Lytec is, is the affordable housing?
Yep.
Correct.
Yep. Good. Thank you, Mr. Sanders, for your participation. Any other citizen concerns? Riley.
My name's Riley, I work for the newspaper. I guess, I, I was pretty, even though I wasn't here, I was, I was happy to hear that cardboard cutout of myself was requested.
Did you bring it with you?
Yeah, I didn't bring it with me. I, I guess I was disappointed in the conversation about resolution 2025-20, about the public records requests. And it, disappointing on a couple of different levels, I guess. Disappointing that the, a certain motion to not exempt village residents from the fee schedule passed by a vote of two to one, when there was technically a quorum, but there wasn't the full council here. And so I'd be interested in a hypothetical universe to see how that would have, how that vote would have changed had all five council members been here. It was also kind of disappointing to hear that, you know, print media journalists such as myself and such as my colleagues at the Yellow Springs News couldn't ostensibly benefit from public records requests involving police video that, you know, while we're not, we're not competing with WHIO, we're not competing with Dayton Daily, we're not competing with Dayton 24/7 to, yes, show the video, but that could still potentially be beneficial information for me and my job and what I do on a day-to-day basis. And I think what we have done in the past couple of years, I think compassionately, I think if you look at, you know, the way we treated the March homicide this year compared to WHIO and how they treated it, I think we tried to exhibit a little more small-town compassion. And having access to those videos might allow us to do that work a little more effectively and perhaps more compassionately. But I, like, I understand the purpose of the resolution, or I understand the purpose of the legislation, I understand HB 315. Like, I do not want Judy and Officer Beam to spin their wheels fulfilling public records requests made in bad faith by bad actors who are looking to exploit and profit from what happens in town. That, that, that sucks. I'm sorry that you have to do that, Judy, and Officer Beam, I'm sorry you have to do that. That's not what I want you to spend your time as a person doing, and that's not what I want my tax dollars going towards also. But at the same time, I, as a taxpayer and as a small-town journalist, I do not want to be penalized for the actions of those bad actors. So at the last meeting and previously, you all kind, like, the point of, the last thing I'll say is, the, the collective agreement was that this is likely going to come back before you at the dais, as this policy is enacted. And I hope that when it does, some degree of consideration for your small-town newspaper is, is, is shown. Because $75 per hour is, that's kind of a lot. And, you know, we have a pretty shoestring budget, so that's all. Anyway. Also, it might undermine value number six of resolution 2025-26 that you just passed, which might inhibit the promotion of accessibility through all policies, procedures, and processes. But that was just a last-minute note that I took.
Good. Well, that was a good catch. So we're going to allow some adjustments to be made here? Okay. Well, I guess I do want to say two things, just for, for the public clarity. Number one, the, the $75 is good, bad, or ugly, not for the time we spend, but for the amount of video that's produced, number one. I will, I will lump a group of people together. I won't call them bad actors or the big three or whatever, you know, but any daily news agency or any entity that comes through and makes a request for public video records, and this is spelled out, maybe not in the best way, but certainly anyone who comes up and whether it's one entity or multiple entities that pay for that, work to be done. After that, any other request that comes in, you know, would, the, the work would be done already, so it would, would be made available. Excuse me, and, and at the most, perhaps the cost of a CD, or something like eight, eight bucks. So I'm not, I'm, I'm just making, I'm just clarifying, I'm not saying that that was a compromise or anything, just the fact that chances are, I will say, in my mind, the chances are that Yellow Springs News would come in, maybe right after someone else has come and made the request and obligated themselves to pay for it, and therefore the news probably won't have to pay.
All right, Michelle, you're up.
Judy's got somewhere to be.
I think it's important we not comment on citizen comments.
Oh, well, I, I agree.
All right. You have the first quarter financials in front of you.
Ah, this is where I have the notes.
The first slide is the revenue analysis. Right now, we're slightly under what we projected by 200,000 of revenue. We had projected 4,221, and we're at 4,200,000. The next slide is the expense analysis. Right now, expenses are a million five under budget for the first quarter of '25. And just to clarify, this slide here, it is just payments out the door. It is not anything that's been encumbered, it doesn't include the encumbrances. So this is just checks we've written out the door so far this year.
Right, I'm catching up with you.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good, you know, you're good. But that, but please continue, don't mind me.
All right. So the next two slides is the statement of cash from revenue and expense. It's continued on the next page. The beginning cash balance of 14,126, 926 is increased to 14,640,424. And as you can see, there's negative balances in the unencumbered cash and the gains and loss columns. This is typical for early in the fiscal year, so it's nothing to be alarmed about. These figures reflect timing differences between the expenses, the encumbrances, and the revenue collection. As revenues are received throughout the year, then that obviously will get more imbalanced.
So I am going to stop. This is where I had the question earlier. I said I had things bouncing around in my head. And, and I was prepared to ask for an explanation about all the, the negative numbers and all the red numbers. But then I decided that, given those first two slides, where, you know, the one says we're a little bit behind on the revenue, but way ahead, or ahead of the curve, if you will, regarding expenses, you know, so we haven't brought in as much as we'd hoped, but we've spent way less than we anticipated. And so my original question was going to be, if you tell me, just interpret those two slides as we're okay, then I won't have any other questions. And is that, is that, is that, is it typical that that trend would, could increase such that we will only get more okay as time goes forward?
Yes.
Okay. That allows me to rest easy. Thank you.
All right, good.
Please continue.
So the next slide is the revenue analysis by fund. Typically, at the end of the first quarter, it should be around 25% or greater than expected. We're at 24%, so we're only 1% under for the revenue. And then the next two slides are the expense analysis by fund, and continued on that second page. For best budget management, the total percent expended should be 25% or less, and we're at 17.5. As you can see, the utility roundup fund and the utility overpayment fund were both overappropriated. That was corrected with the supplemental that you approved earlier tonight. The next slide is the bank report. The cash balance increased at the end of the first quarter from 14,1 to 14,6, an increase of 513,498. And then we had interest income from our investments of $141,230.
Okay.
Which Judy will cover in the next presentation.
Indeed.
And then, the last slide, utility roundup. We started the fund at 12,178 for 2025. Through March 31st, we have received $4,000 in revenue, but we have spent $5,392. But we're still pretty good at 10,795 with the balance. We've gotten through the cold season for the most part, so I think, I'm hoping we're pretty good on that.
All right. Good. Any other, any comments or questions or accommodations for Michelle? Well, Michelle, I would say, first of all, thank you for such a thorough report, and thank you for the notes. The notes that you put on there have really helped interpret what's going on, and, and it's been very, very helpful for me. So I thank you and I appreciate that. And like I said, once I got through those first two slides, like, if that continues, the rest of this really doesn't matter.
Right.
Okay. So we're in good shape. All right. Thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you. And a motion to approve those.
Let's do that. It, it happened so quickly, I didn't get the chance.
Still moved.
Again.
And all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't have, it was my fault that that was not introduced properly.
No worries.
All right. On that note, I'm going to hand the floor to you, Judy, for our treasurer's report.
All right. So there's some repetition here. As of March 31st, the village had underactive investment, 14,675,128. That's an increase of 393,202 since that end-of-year report which was given in, just a bit ago, in April. Interest on all investments for first quarter 2025 is on 141,230. Interest rates trended steadily down between September and mid-March, and they seem to have kind of plateaued, they've been hovering around 4.56 for over a month now. So you can see the cash balances there. You note that we did move some money out of West Banko and into Raymond James at, at one point, and that gives you totals, interest income as it has broken down. West Banko, for this, for this quarter, $60,253. Raymond James, $23,267. And Star Ohio, $57,708. And then you can check your balances as of December 31st on the next page, at your leisure. Brad Drager's quarterly commentary provides more detailed look at the forecast for both interest rates and the overall U.S. economy. That's available on request, it is quite a lengthy, but quite informative document. And then I've given totals for Raymond James, which have just changed slightly. Star Ohio rates remain relatively high, as noted earlier, they're in the 4.55, 4.57 range. Annualized yield rate on Thursday, May 1st was 4.58. Treasury rates showed a decrease in the five-year, more substantial decreases in the one and two-year, and little change to the one-month as compared to the report mid-April. Month of April, these valuations were highly changeable, and they were rocketing up and down. The rapid devaluation and adjustment speak to the high volume of purchase driven largely by market uncertainty because bonds are the safe place to go. And the rates, the rate comparison, you can see to the right in red. West Banko's been steadily dropping the interest rate on the village sweep account since early November, following interest rate cuts. As of December 31st, '24, the sweep account was earning 4.7%. At the end of March 25th, we were at a rate of 4.55. We met with a West Banko representative, and she confirmed that they were unwilling to agree to a floor, but they will match Star Ohio rates. And those rates, as noted, have remained fairly consistent. And that is that.
Before you got to that last paragraph, I was going to ask about that West Banko meeting because I knew it was coming the last time, but, so the floor is Star Ohio, because I knew it was coming the last time, but, um, so the floor is Star Ohio then, so to speak. Whatever Star Ohio does, they, they won't go blue.
But they are at least moving with Star. And previously, when they went down, it stayed down and you had to go back in and make a request for them to come back up. So at least they're upping and downing with Star.
Cool.
So, yeah.
Nice, nice, well, good to know. Counsel, questions, comments, concerns? Nothing? All righty. Do we need to formally accept?
You do not.
Okay. But we informally do. The treasurer's report. All righty, thank you, uh, for everyone for your participation up to this point. And now we're to the manager's report.
All right. You won't have to accept this one either. So Elise and I attended a DAMA meeting, which is the Dayton Area Managers Association. We are as a group working on how to better work together as managers and figure out the best thing for moving forward. What we want to see and what we want to get out of the group.
So are there, Johnny, are there some high-ticket items that folks are focusing on?
Education, um, and, um, ways that we can help the public as far as maybe volunteering as a group and organization, mentorship, uh, and some different things. It's not just time to get together and, and talk, there's gonna be educational parts to it. So that is, it's a restructure of the whole organization. This is the DAMA meeting, not the Greater Dayton Areas Managers Association. So it's a different group that take over in a summary.
Okay, okay.
Ben and I attended the AMP conference in Westerville. A big highlight of that one is, is the, uh, three members of the team presented the Light of Navajo for, uh, what they did last year. Actually had two people come up or two, uh, other municipalities afterwards and, and talk to them more so they could get involved as well. So that was a great thing. Ben?
I'm just curious, because I'm really excited about the Light of Navajo Nation. But these other folks that are interested, that are, have expressed interest, these other entities or municipalities, might they actually be involved and might they go along with you all or is it?
They, they would, it would be a separate thing. But what, what we brought to everybody's attention is, is we as a small village can do what the larger ones are doing. You just have to plan, you have to be creative. And some of the other smaller communities, they can team up together. So instead of it just being all the community, it can be one from each community.
Got you, got you, got you.
The other thing is, and big news for Ben Sparks, he graduated. He is now Department of Labor Certified lineman. That is huge. It was the first inaugural, inaugural class for AMP. They, uh, they have had line worker training, but it's never been a certified.
Ah, okay.
So this is the first class. He was one of 21 graduates, and so we was able to attend that graduation. It, it says a lot for his dedication to the trade and to the village. And then we have, um, Alex Kraus and Lane Dykman, which just got their third year books today. So they will be two more years and we'll have two more graduating.
Right, okay.
I got an update from the Vernays there, uh, from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. They are still in the process of reviewing it. But they're back in-house now, so I think that process will pick up. They're not working remotely anymore, so. I see Earth Day went off, Brian was excited, he had a great time. He told us about it. He told Meg and I about it at the, uh, meeting that we attended with him. He said it was very well-attended. And it was a great time, great setup. Lineman Appreciation Week, uh, or Day was April 18th. So Ben and, uh, the team did a great day, a great thing by highlighting them on, uh, social media pages. I want, Elise, could you come up to the mic? I'll, I'll skip by and then I'll circle back to you for a minute. Daisy, one of the dispatchers downstairs, uh, she was, uh, won the award for the 2025 Green County Crisis Intervention Team. So she will be getting a, uh, plaque, uh, later in the week. Paige and Naomi is going with her and probably Morgan, uh, for being a top-notch dispatcher. So I'm gonna back up, I'm gonna let Elise talk about Brighty. We skipped over that last week. So I'm gonna, it was, uh, Elise's intern, so I'll let her talk about it.
Yeah, so Wright State reached out at the start of February, asked if we'd be interested in having an intern. We said yes, and, uh, Brighty Jackson, uh, worked with us for the last two months or so. She graduated from Wright State this past Saturday with her bachelor's in political science. So she's done with us, but onto the next chapter. And she's very excited about a, a future career in public service. So, um, Judy got her up to snuff on records retention while she was here. She, she started working on an emergency response guide for us, um, all great things. So her future is very bright and we wish her all the best.
And safe travels. She's heading to England tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
Big, big time plans, okay.
She will be there for, I think, a month. And then she'll be coming back. Blue Envelope Program launch, uh, the team downstairs, Police Department has put this together. Kirsten and Jeff Beam have been the leads on that. If you know somebody that has autism, uh, it is a great program. They can give it to the village or go to the village site and it will tell you exactly what to do and how to get involved in the program. Florence's outreach served a total of 112 different, uh, people this last two weeks. Dark Skies, uh, Laura Krul's brought this to my attention and I was able to send Aaron, to sit in a presentation. He thought it would be such a great ideal that we've invited the presenter to come and give it to, uh, myself, Aaron, uh, Ben Sparks, and two of the other people from Public Works to see if there's things that we can do to, uh, in our zoning code to make things a little bit better. They offer different types shields for different style lights. So we thought it was a great idea, so they're gonna come in and, and give us the talk as well. So I'll have another update once we have that presentation as well.
I, I do have a question about that. It seems like there was some, or maybe I just read something about, you know, the dark skies and certain, uh, lights for housing and whatnot during the Oberer, uh, session?
Yes.
Are we talking to developers now?
We are.
Okay.
So Springs Meadow has no pole lights. They're all yard lights and they all have to be downward facing.
Okay.
So we already are proactively doing it. We just wanna see what is out there to where we can, uh, do some more.
Great, great, thanks.
MVR PC dinner, we was able to attend that, myself and Meg. We was there with Brian House and it was a great event. And just had a good time. Nope, couldn't get it, there was an NFL draft that night, so nobody wanted to go. So, um, I gave you this, uh, summer's, uh, summer sewer and gardening program. Sign up, uh, down in the utility office if you're interested in that. She put that in there this week.
Regarding that, I'm not here in Yell Springs, I haven't ever requested that. But like, how big of a garden do you need? You just, how many plants?
There is a to, well, there is a total for the summer. Um, I don't think we're gonna come out and inspect your garden, we're gonna take and get your word. Maybe we, we will for you now.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Put that on record when you're gonna inspect Kevin's.
Right.
There is a total amount of gardening, or there's a total amount of water and it is applied to your October bill as you prepare it. So, uh, it is for May, June, and July. And it's applied to your August, I believe, bill.
Okay, sorry, well, I think I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna sign up.
I'll come by and get some cucumbers.
Right, right, right.
One thing that I wanted to note is on the water loss this month, uh, we are trying to really get a handle on it. One, one month we're at 39, and January and this month we're at 28%. 28% by the way is 28 and 80. So if you take that at the end of the year, so. We are literally trying to figure out, uh, where the water loss is coming from. We've got some big plans this summer, uh, and even into the winter to try to capitalize and see where that's at. We're not finding it in the meters. Rose is doing a fantastic job with the team. We're catching leaks, but that's still not bringing the numbers down. So now if this number come down another 28% next month, I was like, hmm, maybe we found something. It's just a number that we've been watching and trying to work and trying to make sure that we can get that number down.
Is, is there a typical regarding this, amount of losses?
10 to 15%.
All righty, that answers the question.
But we was at 57% and 22. So we have made, uh, significant strides to get it to where it is now.
Great.
Let's see here. We did remove, uh, some potential large tree on East Inan Road, uh, that had fell over and was laying into the electric lines. The tree committee is looking for volunteers to help GIS all the memorial trees and trees in the right of way. We're, we have switched GIS services and they've built out a tree site to where, uh, we can actually have it as a public link when we get it all done to where if somebody has a memorial tree, they can click on it, they can read about it, they can actually get a, know where it's going, where it's at, how they get to it to visit it. So, uh, they are looking at volunteers to do the GIS. The baseball fields, we've made some improvements there. I want to thank, uh, Craig McCann for doing the wall in front of Gaunt Park. There's, that wall was falling apart and he was able to work his magic. On top of that, we, the drinking fountain at the Gaunt Park, it is fully operational, water bottle, water bottle filler, two drinking fountains, and it actually works for the drain. They fixed it, they got the oil concrete replaced. So, uh, they also made some improvements to the stormwater on the, uh, 201 South Walnut Building so the basement will quit, uh, stop flooding. So we was able to get that done. We have inspection for the pool on May 15th. So we're making a mad dash and, uh, trying to get some things done. We did get a lot of concrete repaired done. This year took a lot of trip hazards out up there. They're in the process of painting the stripes, getting the plumbing hooked up, changing the water meter out. So there's a lot of busy work happening at the pool. What I have.
Excellent, chock, chock full of information, lots of good news.
And Brian made the front page.
Yeah, noticed that, yeah. What do you have to do to do that? My council colleagues, you have any questions? Uh, Vile's manager for his, uh, very informative, uh, manager's report. Nope, nothing? All right, Johnny, thank you for that, we appreciate it. And? Looks like we're into old business now. And the first, uh, item under old business is the council process for projects. And I'm gonna hand the floor to my colleague Gavin DeVorner.
Yeah, I guess I'll just, I assume people saw Judy put together the document from when we talked about this a month or so ago and I just wrote up just where we were last time. So if anybody has any questions, happy to take them, but otherwise, I assume it's pretty straightforward.
Did we, is this a, was there, were there some improvements or changes made from the last version? It seems, there was something I thought that was.
This is the only version that's been shared.
Okay. Okay, so it's, it's the same as before, okay, good, good, great. Do we have any comments, questions?
Looks good to me.
So what, Gavin, do you, um, I mean, there's a process that we'd like to follow, but we, this is not new. But we do tend to.
It is new, I mean, we haven't, we haven't, at least in my time here, we haven't had a system to deal with it in the past. So it's, it's just documented.
We haven't executed it, yeah, we, it's.
Well, we didn't ever, I mean, if there was something, we didn't ever, it's never communicated. So just functionally now, if we talk, if something comes up up here, uh, or in between meetings, that is gonna be, uh, something that we need to decide upon, that there's, we're sort of naming, hey, let's talk about it. And that's all.
Yeah, and, and I think, um, I guess what I would like to get, and, and Gavin, I imagine you, you would as well, from all of us, a general commitment to, you know, try to follow this and not just show up with a grand plan.
Should be laminated, Judy, or that are in front of us for each meeting, you collect them after the fact. Get a big wall size.
Yeah, yeah.
On the ceiling.
Yeah.
No, I'm serious, we should have a copy in front of us as a reminder.
So I think for, especially for, um, I don't think I appreciated this until I was part of the agenda planning meetings. I think everybody's been part of the agenda planning meetings now. The real question or commitment is, do we do it at agenda planning? Because it's pretty common that something will come up up here, there'll be, I, I think with the last time we talked about it, I picked on Brian when he brought up the prosecution thing that was, so, you know, we're presenting about it and then he throws in this little comment and says, hey, can you do this? And then we all just kind of keep going. And then the staff's going, wait a minute, do we do that thing? Are people for that thing? So the, the main thing is just, if you catch stuff where you're like, hey, this got brought up, bring it up. And then I'm just saying, I think for agenda planning, that's the like main accountability measure, is that we have to bring it up. And it's been hard for us to stay on agenda and consistently talk about the things that we're talking about. So that's the, I think that's the functional main challenges. Are we actually gonna talk about agenda planning? Especially when it gets complicated, right? When there's a thing, we all do this all the time, where somebody says something that you don't really want to talk about anymore. And there's a dynamic of, this is sort of saying, oh, we're gonna force the issue. We're gonna talk about it and make a decision so that there's not things left in limbo.
All righty. Sounds good. Members of, uh, agenda planning, we're all good, good with this? I think we are. Any, any amount of, and Gavin, I want to commend you, any amount of control or, uh, you know, process management is, is always helpful. I think we tend to, we tend to take that kind of thing for granted, but it always helps, uh, help things move along. So we appreciate, appreciate your efforts. All righty, thank you again for everyone involved with that. Someone named Burns.
It is me again.
All righty.
All right, this is the Zoom conversation that we've been having over a couple councils. We have made a change with camera systems. We can officially do it now? No, not yet. But we are doing it to where if we need to be able to do it because of, we all need to stay home because we're sick, the state tells us to stay home, but we would like to make it to where if you need to be off, you, you can be off. But if we gotta zoom in, it's only for staff to zoom in right now, um, on emergencies or if we got a, a major problem. So it's a lot of work for staff to be able to watch different things and, uh, get it up and running. So that is the reason why we're bringing it back to see how council, if this is something council would like to bring back and be able to vote on it or to amend it.
Just a clarifying comment. If, if we're a matter of everyone needing to stay home, we do have the ability to do that now. What we don't have the ability to do is pipe in someone, um, while it's live broadcasting.
Excellent, excellent, excellent.
Channel five. With his own mic.
Yeah, well. He borrowed a mic, but, uh, I'm sure he could have used his own mic if he, if he wanted to. All right, anybody have questions, um, regarding the status of, um, the technology we just discussed and how it would and could be used in the future? Yep.
Well, I don't know, Carmen, they, thanks for waiting for us to give some input on it. I don't, did you have anything you wanted to say about it or? I don't, did you have anything you wanted to say about it or? I mean, we talked about it in agenda planning for a minute. I, I don't feel real strongly about it. The basic idea of us all being in person to be able to be on the same page makes sense. As somebody who has used the virtual option a couple different times, I, I find value in it in that if you have to be away for some reason to be able to stay in the loop of what's going on, but I can also stay in the loop like I did after the last meeting I missed and watch the meeting and then follow up and ask questions. So not a real big deal. What we talked about agenda planning, just to kind of flag, is that when we update our rules and procedures thing at some point for this year, I think sort of like the thing behind the thing is that we want to have consistent participation. And so just, we don't have any expectations right now. So just to have some like, hey, here's the number of meetings that, there's nothing right now about number of meetings that people are at or what happens if people miss meetings or anything. So we just talked about maybe putting something into place. So there's some kind of basic like expectation or whatever.
And so I think that we need to talk about a leave of absence and what that is. That also needs to be, that needs to be built into, into whatever the discussion is or whatever is written down.
Totally. Yeah, and we've certainly been attempting to talk about the whole leave of absence thing, but I don't think we know that there's any big ramifications to us not doing it. I think what we are responsible for, what we can do is make sure that everyone does have an excused absence. And, and as far as I'm concerned, everybody's good in that regard. Everybody's in good standing. But there's just been some debate about, really, is there an issue? Is there?
Yeah, public officials take leave of, leaves of absences all the time.
Mm-hmm.
So what I'm hearing you say is, we need to build that into rules and procedures. It's just not there.
Yeah, well, so can I just ask, so when we, like when we, I remember we started doing the excuse absence thing at some point in my tenure. Like, we didn't do it and then now we do it. And it's because of some, is there a rule or something?
We received some advice that indicated it would be a good idea for us to do. So not wanting to ever not do everything that would be good, we decided, why not do that?
No, I just, I, as I understood it, we didn't have like a if you have, like, I don't think we've ever had an unexcused absence. And if, even if we did have one, would something happen to someone? Like?
Well, I mean, if there was no note, something could happen. Or if that note was forged by you, by the way.
If your parents did something.
So because council, see me using my mic, Ben?
Yep.
Because council is a paid board, the, it's best practice to have the, have absences be excused. Just to make it clear that the board's aware that there's an absence and that, you know, it's acknowledged on the record.
Yep. Okay, good, good.
And of course, Judy, it's everything that's administered as legal advice to her.
I am so in line with all the legal advisors. That's on record.
And of course, if there are a series of consecutive absences, that string is broken by the very next public meeting at which a person attends.
Well, we don't have anything, I think that's what Carmen's point is. We, there's nothing in writing anywhere that articulates what a string of absences is.
Yep.
And then, you know, if a meeting in between breaks that, at this point, there's nothing to point out to suggest that, well, that would be in violation of our policy. There is no policy.
And then, right, and, and the violation of the policy and then?
To what end?
None. I mean, really.
So we need a much ado about nothing clause.
Like?
And make no mistake, I specialize in much ado about nothing. But, yeah, I mean, there really is nothing. There is no...
And charging for it, though.
There's money well spent.
That's the much part.
Just for fun. I love it.
But we, to respond to that in all seriousness, that could be, that can be addressed, and I think it should be addressed. I think should also be addressed that if someone's taking a leave of absence, there's zero expectation that even if you pass the ordinance to approve people being able to zoom in, there's no expectation that that person should, should do so. If you're out, you're out. And so I think we'd hold that out separately.
And I think it's important to have something documented just so that we're all of the same mind in this regard. Because it, there was some discussion about it in the last meeting. So I just want to make sure that we're all in, in, in good stead and on the same page. It's all good.
So that the, I guess the issue with the remote meeting status is there, I mean, we've gotten feedback from folks and there's not one agreement, there's not one point of agreement where everyone says, yes, I think we should stop doing that and we should make sure that this is locked in. It's really all over the board. So it would be useful to hear from each of you, kind of a, yes, I would like to be able to still remote in individually for, for meetings, or no, I don't see that that's necessary and I'm good with the emergency only clause, so that we know how to frame up the ordinance.
I like the emergency only sort of aspect of things. Primarily, we're all the same. We either are all here or all out. And then there are those rare occurrences where someone might need to come in. And I don't want to try to define that.
You're saying you, you want to keep the, what are we calling it, remote access?
I like the option. We don't have to use it. And I do understand that that...
Wait, no, no, you mean individuals still having the opportunity to remote in?
Under rare circumstances.
So you're all here and one person remotes in?
If it's necessary.
Okay.
Well, then we have to define that, right? And then that gets gray.
Well, I, maybe the individual can define. I ain't there and I ain't there.
I think it can be that vague for now, because it's really, that's about how to, are we gonna keep using this technology in this manner? And then there's a separate part, which is how among council members are you defining what's at an absolute necessity to use that remote option? That's separate from this, where I wouldn't like it in the ordinance. Would, I don't, that's not probably something you want to put into the ordinance.
Yeah, we, what, you know, what's, what's the, what is the emergency? Like, if you're just away working someplace else, and if you, so if you can't physically be here, you can't physically be here.
What are the circumstances where we need a super majority?
There are a lot of them. But the way your ordinance currently operates, you're still counted in quorum if you attend remotely.
I mean, needing a super majority is not, not frequent. Anytime you read an emergency, something has an emergency requires a super majority.
And there's a few other provisions in the law that require it. But again, like the way it's working right now, that, the two, it's not impacted if you're attending remotely.
The only other thing I've seen has been just when people have health, health issues in their family. That's been the, the two things I've seen in my time are when people are, I know, the only time I've done it is when I've been away traveling for work and then, but I know others have used it for when they've had family health issues.
Yeah. So if there's an, so super majority, so if we have to have a super majority, then people should be able to zoom in if they otherwise cannot be here.
Yes. That's a practical.
If we need to have...
A quorum.
Right. For emergencies, not like personal emergencies, but for village emergencies, emergency readings of stuff, then people can zoom in? And if not, everybody needs to be here? Well, you make, you make, you make faces.
Yeah, I, I, I'm making a face. I apologize for that.
Okay.
Only because I think we might be getting too...
His camera got you.
Yeah, I know, camera's gonna see me now. I think we might be getting too specific if we try to get that, because things change and happen on the fly, where legislation is added to the agenda, things might be converted to an emergency.
Right.
And if you've got someone who's out of town and is planning on attending, or is, you know, home with a, with a sick family member, whatever the case may be, we may not have all of that information when those plans are made, in terms of like what's going to be actually happening in real time when the meeting happens. So my, my suggestion would be if you're going to allow one-off members to attend by Zoom or, you know, online, then I wouldn't try to write into it that if this, then that, if this, then that. I would either allow for it or not allow for it.
Yep. Very.
And it's within councils' purview to change it. And if you get, if, if at some point, there's a member of council that takes advantage of it, or that the rest of you feel takes advantage of it, then you can call to put the thing back on the agenda and take out the Zoom option.
And there is again, some minor cost. We don't need to okay that. We are, we are okaying it by saying we'd like to have that option. Yeah. Okay. Yes.
Well, I mean, Judy asked us to go on the line. Should we go down the line? I mean, I don't feel, I don't feel that strongly about it. I, I think I've, I think almost all of us have utilized it at some point or another. I have, I'm not aware of anybody abusing it. I'm not aware, as I understood it, the main challenge and complication is the citizen involvement, at least from my, maybe I'm missing something, but from my end, as someone who's been calling in remotely, the hard part is the just getting someone on. And then once you're on, you're just there. So I don't, it doesn't seem like it's that big of a challenge, but I can, I do appreciate the, in general, I hate hybrid meetings, honestly. Here, we have so little discussion that, and it's already so awkward, that it doesn't, it's not, to me, doesn't feel like hybrid meetings where you're at a round table and everybody's, like, when we did the goals and you were the screen that we couldn't see. That's where it gets weird, you know? In this context, it's all ridiculous. So anyway, this is all to say, I really don't feel that strongly about it. But if I were, if I have to vote on for leaving the ability, I would leave the ability.
Okay.
Your turn. What do you think, Carmen?
I have, I have nothing, I have nothing to say.
Okay.
Alright.
I'm open to either option.
Okay. We'll make things as good as we can and we'll use them when we need.
I feel quite certain this is gonna be a circumstance where Judy's gonna say, we just still do not have clarity. Is that?
You're absolutely correct.
Oh, no, we, we have enough clarity to bring you an ordinance at which you will do this all over again. But yes, we do have enough clarity to bring an ordinance that will allow you to have the same conversation again before you pass it.
Okay, and there's liable to be five O's then. We'll make it even better.
For the record, Amy was on camera with the new camera up here, so she was able to remain seated and talk into the mic.
And make faces. It's so good, I guess.
She did say last meeting that she would never do that.
Ah. See, we, 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 we are better already. And we, we, we have not appreciated it as much as we should, but we are. I, for one, am very appreciative of all of the technology and, and the way we're using it. So I think we're in good shape.
Right.
Alright, anything else on this before we move on? Okay, we are in new business. And I have not consumed the funding request, but I will talk about it as much as I can. There it is.
So I will say, they dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's.
Yep.
They did a great job filling that out. The only, really, the only issue at hand is that there's, there are two, there's one monetary request in one place, and they've also attached a Rumpke estimate for the portage. So that combination is much more...
So what they're asking us for is here, right? Or are they asking us for that as well?
Yep, this is the Rumpke, $350.
Okay.
That's the estimate.
Is that the entire ask?
Yes.
I will acknowledge, I didn't read it. I was looking for an email, didn't get it. It looks like it's a funding request for Porch Fest for $350, $350 or some amount that's represented by approximately $350. Pretty straightforward. I think we're in, I suspect that we're in agreement with providing the support. Is there any critical data points we need to consider?
So it says Rumpke or if the, does it say if the village can find another vendor?
Correct.
Is that, is that the going rate?
We'll probably direct into our normal vendor and it'd be a little bit less.
Okay.
The other thing that they're asking is for the trash boxes.
Yeah.
And that will have to come through Rumpke. So there will be some more cost.
The cost.
And then the installation of the banners. I do not think they're asking for a monetary number for banner creation, but there could be. Installation.
If you approve an internal transfer for the cost of installing the banners, that, that works because that is what happens. And so it doesn't, Porch Fest doesn't need to worry about how much that was. And you don't have to, as long as you're saying we are approving an internal transfer to cover that, then it's just the trash boxes and portageons that need to get covered. And that will need to come back as a resolution because you gotta do those things. So we'll hammer out exactly what those amounts are as long as I have an indication that you folks are willing to approve the entirety of that request.
Anyone not willing to approve the entire request, which will include the $350 plus probably the trash can cost and potentially a transfer of funds to get the banner hung?
And the portlets.
Oh, port, oh, portlets, that's, yeah.
And that's, yeah, that's $350, right?
Yep. Alright. Anybody opposed to that, some number that, it sounded like it might end up being $600 or less?
I'd say less than $500.
Yeah.
Okay. We're all good? Okay, so pseudo-approved. We, we all agree. We just nodded. We didn't vote. But we're okay with seeing something?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll see some, some legislation and we'll...
I got you. You...
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm just feeling paranoid now.
Okay, so now we, so can you just remind me again, so what, why is this coming to us and not through the like process that we made for these things?
Because they're very late. They are not one of the, they stopped doing Porch Fest for a chunk of time. And so they missed out on the, where we gave a general approval for those regular folks.
But there wasn't, I thought we had like a, up to a certain amount, the committee could decide or something. No? It's like we have to...
Did we repeal that policy, the one that he's speaking of? I know we spoke of it in recent months.
We, I don't think we formally did. We just decided, listen, if we know who our regular folks are, we can pass a resolution that says, here, all these guys up to these amounts. Get it taken care of.
We should probably repeal that policy. And I do believe there was like a de minimis term in there.
There was in the, I think that was the one we did after the one, we did the one that said, hey, if we're doing these small amounts, we'll just give these people, you know, this group approval. And then we did the one that said, and here's the ones for the next time, and forgot about the first one. Anyway, I'll just, I'm just basically saying, I don't personally feel the need to talk about things that are $500. And I think we had considered that when we made the proposal original.
Please let's make sure we do have, get the story straight about, is there something we need to repeal or are we following it or not? And we, and we can just follow up? Alright, ladies, your own camera.
We will circle the wagons.
Yes, yes, yes.
Two wagons.
Good, good.
Circle. I don't know if you can do that.
That's a line, isn't it?
Wagons.
Alright, please forgive me. But a little levity goes a long way.
Now for the not levity.
So thank you for, yes, that was fun. And now we're to, anything that begins with urgent repairs, it's not necessarily fun, but I'm sure necessary and important. Johnny Burns.
Alright, so yes, it is not fun. When we have mechanical breakdowns that we are not expecting, we have three active leaks in our boiler system. We have been nursing since... in our boiler system, we have been nursing since December when it was minus five out. We had one, we passed it, slowed the leak down. In the last two months, we've sprung two more leaks, some on top of brand-new ceilings. The problem is, is when they originally put it in thirty-one years ago, that was the first thing installed. And then you have all the ductwork, you have all the lights, you have all the electrics. So we, this cost, the two hundred and seven thousand dollars, is to replace all the four-inch copper nineties in the system that take the hard turns and are now got pinholes on. So we are probably going to go out for two more quotes, I just wanted you guys to be aware of this, it will be coming back. The least for this company that has maintained the system in the eleven years that I've been here, we have a maintenance contract with them, the least of what cost us this year is a hundred and fifty thousand. We have to do the first two phases because they have the leaks in them right now. What happens is when you repair them leaks in the first two phases, phase three and four gets the most pressure and then they start leaking again. So once the system's drained, because you have to drain all the glycol and all the heating out of it, it's easier to repair them while the system's down versus install it all and then go back next year and then de-energize it and bring it all out. And while they was here looking at that, we started getting alarms and bells and whistles. This one does not need council's approval, although I'm going to lump it into the supplemental when we bring it back. Unit air handler one, no, air handler two, compressor number one failed and it is ten thousand eight hundred and seventy something dollars, seventy-six dollars for one compressor. Right now, the system is in lump mode, so one side of the building is a little bit warmer than the other side of the building, but we are actively, I'm working with Amy to see if this is something that we have to have multiple quotes on, or because we have a maintenance contract, we can do that just with them. So we will get that answer. You may see this come back the following week. This would require a supplemental because we did not plan on two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a heating system repair.
Got you.
And some of the expenses is because they have to dismantle everything below, including ceiling grid, ceilings and all that.
We're going to leave it above all the infrastructure?
We have to. We have to, because they're talking almost a half million dollars if it was to replace the entire system with brand-new stuff, which they're saying the straight runs are not the problem, it is the hard nineties that is the issue.
Okay.
So, and it is four-inch copper. So the return and the inlet are both failing at the same time.
That's a big piece of copper to sweat.
It is a big, now, they will not be sweated on anymore because they have went to the crimping style, so they will have to replace some of it.
Sharp biker.
No, no, it's a compression. I don't recommend them no more. So it will be a compression style. Another one that I will be bringing to you, I just got today, I'll just give you a small bit of it, is the wastewater treatment plant had a blower go out. We was expecting a twenty thousand dollar repair. We got the bill as a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar blower. So I'm, we, I've not even had a chance, actually Brad sent it to me and says, please make sure you're sitting down when you open this email, I'll talk to you tomorrow. So another issue that we have arose that we did not have any, no knowledge of, one that I would like to bring back, I'm going to work to put it on an agenda, is the study for the wastewater treatment plant that we talked about. Brad will come and do a presentation at the same time, to be able to go out to the EPA to take out a loan for the amount for the study. If we get the study done, they can then roll that into a construction loan if we go to construction. Those are the things that are coming up. Sorry for the bad news, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's good that we don't get bad news as often as we could, but these things happen and we haven't had to deal with them much, but we want to be responsible, so yay us. All righty. Well, thanks, Johnny. Council, any questions regarding the potential supplementals for repairs? Okay, we will not, to my knowledge, have an executive session. And if I'm not mistaken, we are down to future agenda items. Yes?
Johnny, do you need any other legislation other than just supplemental for the blower?
Uh, supplemental for the blower and then the permission to go to the engineering firm for wastewater treatment.
Got it?
And that's just the same, the thing that Brad already talked about.
Great, great. I'm just going to have him here in case there's more questions.
Okay, so that, that's a, we got added a supplemental, we added a resolution, we are adding a resolution to approve the grant funds for Porch Fest, and then I've already added that Ohio Housing Trust Fund in there because some of these folks should be okayed. But this is the time, I mean, if anyone's got any question about that?
I'm good, I support it coming back to us, this legislation. Get everything from various people to make sure it's all got all the right stuff in it?
Not yet. I, she did say she could obtain the sample resolution, which I don't, I don't see any issue. Yellow Springs, I'll fire it and we're off to the races.
All righty, cool. All right, any other future agenda items that we can think of or that we need to have lined up for next meeting?
Uh, to council, I trust it's June second.
Got you, right.
And I don't, and I may not have, no, it's here, request to extend green space fundability? Yep, that's there for June second.
All right, trying to stop thinking about that now. All right, anything else for the good of the order? David, yes?
Yes.
Good timing.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
Really, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You're welcome.
That's how it works like this.
Yeah, right, right. Record, did he, did he actually say?
That's a record.
Okay.
That's a record.
I love it, I love it. All right, anything else with the good of the order hearing? Nothing, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn?
No move.
We, we are adjourned by acclamation. Have a good night, everyone.